Hello and welcome to Framingham Now. I'm Jack Patrick Lewis, state representative for the majority of South Framingham, some of North Framingham, and the entire town of Ashland. On this program, we talk with elected officials, community leaders, and area activists about the current political landscape in Framingham and the future of the town that many of us call home. On today's show, I will be interviewing four of the five candidates for Framingham's school committee, each of whom are campaigning hard for the April 4 election. The candidates vying for one of the three seats available are Michelle Brosnahan, Cheryl Gordon, Don Taggart, Scott Wadland, and Jim Stockless. Michelle Brosnahan, current member of the school committee and former president of Stapleton Elementary's PTO, was unable to join us today but will be answering the same questions of the other candidates on her website listed below now. Our first guest today is Cheryl Gordon, former town meeting member and facilitator of Chat About Framingham Public Schools, a Facebook page followed by over 2,000 local families. Thank you so much Cheryl for being on the show today. So let's just jump right in. Why do you think you should be elected to the Framingham School Committee?
Well, one interesting thing is we have not had a school committee member living south of Route 9 for a very long time. So if elected, I will be the only school committee member living south of Route 9. While I will always have the best interests of all children in Framingham in mind when I make decisions and cast votes, I hope to be a voice also for the south side of Framingham, especially to families who feel like maybe they don't have a voice now. I will make myself accessible to people from all walks of life who may have questions or concerns, or if they're new to the district, or if they've been here a long time and they're looking for some additional support. I would like to be that person.
Excellent. And so tell everyone viewing, what is your connection to the Framingham Public Schools?
Well, I myself went to the Framingham Public Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. I attended Jonathan Maynard, and then Brophy, and Walsh, and Framingham South High School, and then I got my bachelor's degree from Framingham State College. I have done a lot of different volunteer activities in the town, but one of the things for the last eight years is the administrator of the Chat About the Framingham Public Schools Facebook page. It was my way of continuing some public service in the community after I gave up town meeting. I did town meeting for 12 years, and I wanted to do something that would involve less night meetings. And so I'm able to still be with my children and yet contribute to the school community by helping people, being a resource. I find myself late at night often answering questions offline for people or directing them to somebody in the district. And so I felt like this was a natural progression of, now that my children are getting a little older, to be able to attend meetings at night and to be able to have more of a voice in the school system.
And did I adequately say that the Facebook page has over 2,000 families that are currently?
Yes, yes. There's also several principals, and many teachers, staff members, janitors, custodians, there's people from all different parts of the school district that are also part of the group.
Excellent. So let's talk a little bit about what you feel is most facing the Framingham Public Schools at this time. People who are thinking of running for elected office often have reasons that they're running. No one wakes up in the morning and says, "I have nothing to do with my day. I'm going to run for elected office." There has to be something that's brought you to this point. And in our couple minutes together, can you talk to me a little bit about what your major issues are?
Well, one of my concerns is that we're quickly running out of space in the Framingham Public Schools. We have a growing school population and a lack of space. I know their plan's underway to build another school, and to remodel a school, and to do other upgrades like that. But realistically, there doesn't seem to be a very broad plan to ensure that, you know, we have enough high school space for the kids entering now. One of the things I'm very excited about is the new superintendent, Mr. Trembley, that they picked. He was my favorite in the interviews. I felt like he answered every question in such a good way that he would be a perfect fit for our district. So I'm also very excited about him joining the district, and I'm hoping he's going to be looking at the population trends that are happening and ensuring that we don't have any overcrowded classrooms, and that, you know, all parts of town have enough school space.
Excellent. And I attended many of those interviews, those community interviews, and saw you there. If you're elected to the school committee, you'll be working closely with them.
Yep.
It's exciting. I wonder if you could talk a little bit, dive a little bit deeper about what you just mentioned about school space and the need for more classrooms, more schools, and what role maybe you would play on the school committee on that subject?
Well, one of the things, I know that they had planned on building a school at the Bethany property at one point. My concern is I think that we need to be looking at more central locations. While I'm in favor of school choice, I also think that we should look at the model periodically that we're using and make sure that even though we have school choice, that we are allowing for people to use their neighborhood schools if they so choose. The current model we have right now does not have that ability. Some families who live 500 feet from a school cannot use that school because there's no spaces. So I would like to see it adjusted a little bit so that we never turn a family away from using their neighborhood school, but yet you still have the choice if you would like to pick a school in another part of town. So that's why I think central locations make sense because it's less busing then. If you choose a school that's in the center of town, you're less likely to have to go six miles. You could go two or three miles.
Makes sense. I was curious, though. So you're running for one of the three seats.
Right.
There are currently five candidates who are running for three seats. You're not currently on the school committee.
Right.
I was curious if there's something the school committee has voted on over the last couple of years that, had you been a member, maybe you would have had a different voice at the table as somebody who's entering this process?
Well, this wasn't the last couple of years, but it's been something that's concerned me for a long time, is we have a system where if you choose a school that is more than two miles from your home, you qualify for free transportation to that school. If you use a school that's your neighborhood school, which might be 1.8 miles from your home, you would then have to pay for a seat. I would like to see it looked at so that we set the system up to encourage people to use their neighborhood schools and make it a privilege to choose a school a little farther away. What that would entail, I don't know, but it's been something, it seems like it's at one extreme right now, and I would love to see that conversation come up and, you know, try and bring a little bit of fairness to the model.
Excellent. So last question, as our time draws to a close. What is it about Framingham that makes it the sort of town that you're happy to live in, that you're happy to advocate for, and now you're running to hopefully represent?
So the diversity of the Framingham Public Schools and the town itself is one of the greatest strengths of the school system. I have my children attending two of the most diverse schools in town, McCarthy and Fuller, and I have no regrets. It's been a great experience. One thing that's very important to me is that every child, whether they move here from another town, another state, or another country, that we treat them with dignity and respect, and we make sure they have the tools they need to succeed in the future because it's our job to make them ready for life. And so I think that we need to make sure that we take the time to find the resources to get everybody up to speed so that they can be successful adults.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much Cheryl for coming on the show.
Thank you.
We'll return after this break with Don Taggart.
Morning Gary. We are Get School's Da Car. You want a college education, don't you?
You know you do.
Yeah, but I don't know where to start.
That's why we're here. We're free, handsome.
I think we're breathtaking.
And here to guide you through every step of the way, starting with attendance.
Gary, financial aid forms?
Biology homework, chief. I got this.
Is that bran? Colleges love extracurricular activities.
Chess really isn't my thing.
I got this. Doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Picking a college, man.
You and us.
Go together like tacos and Tuesday.
And I love tacos.
Fire and ice.
Those don't really go together.
Go to GetSchool.com for more info.
Next, we have Don Taggart, current member of the school committee and former public school teacher for over 30 years. Thank you so much, Don, for joining us today.
Thank you very much for having me.
So let's just jump right in. Why should the residents of Framingham reelect you to the school committee?
Well, the main reason is this is my career, has been my career, and has been a way to continue it. As you mentioned, I was a teacher for over 30 years. I taught 4th and 6th grade, and then I taught high school most of the years in Weston. The education is very important to me. This is a way for me to give back in a lot of ways. I was a union president. I negotiated seven contracts while I was in Weston. So I have a lot of experience with dealing with school committees from the other side from the, and it was also important to me to work with the Teachers Association here in Framingham as a school committee member and do some negotiating around contracts using the interest-based bargaining process, the IBB process, which we have been using. And I've been vice chair the past year of the school committee, working with Heather Conley in a very difficult year in some ways, and that's been a challenge. I've been able to help her out, and I feel that I can represent the committee well in the public. It's, as I said, it's really a continuation of sort of my life's work. And so I have this feeling for the teachers. I know where they're coming from. I understand a lot of the issues, and it helps me look at not just the policy and the budget, but a lot of the things that are going on in the schools that I hope to be able to address.
Excellent. And so while you've taught in Weston for 30 years and you led the union there, you also have some local connections to our schools.
Yes, I do. Besides my boys, one of Zach's a sophomore at the high school, and Andrew's in 7th grade at Walsh. I've been on the Barbary School Council for the last three years. I've been on the Walsh School Council. I am presently a school committee member of the Walsh Innovation Program, which is looking at Summit Program, which has started in grade 6. I am a school committee-appointed representative of the MSBA Building Committee that's looking into the new construction that's going to go on in Framingham. I've worked with Angie Goldberg at Cameron School. I've done some reading and some mentoring at Woodrow Wilson.
You're a busy man.
I enjoy being around kids a lot.
Excellent.
I really do. It keeps me grounded and gets me back in it, although the boys, I usually tell them when I'm coming so they know I'm around.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, I was curious, we only have a couple more minutes.
Sure.
But could you talk a little bit about what issues you think are most facing Framingham Public Schools?
Sure.
At this juncture?
Well, I think, to me, the combination is a couple. One of our major things, obviously, is budget and policy, which are our primary focus as a school committee member. But there's a piece in our goals this past year which talks about social-emotional learning in the schools, and gets at another piece that I think is really critical. The whole, if you will, aura around the schools. The hiring of the new superintendent has been one of the highlights of my time as a school committee member. Dr. Bob Trembley is a very exciting man. He's excited to come to Framingham as an educator. I'm delighted that we have chosen him. And I'm looking at the issues around developing not just the academic side of kids, but the supportive side, where they get the kind of support that they need and learn how to reach out, and both to their teachers and classmates. I was a child of an Army officer. I went to 13 schools in 12 years. I understand what it's like to be the new kid on the block, to be new in town, how hard that is. And so I want to help kids learn how to greet newcomers in the schools, the adults as well, how to greet a part of a new population. So those routes are very important to me. And I just have a very positive outlook about what can happen in the schools, and we can look for blame and so on, but I really want to focus on helping not only kids academically, but develop into being just good people.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. Our last question.
Sure.
What is it about Framingham that makes it the sort of town that you are happy to live in, you're happy to advocate for, and you're eagerly running for reelection to the school committee to advocate for even further?
All right. Well, one of the big things is the diversity of the town, which has kept me here and allowed Kristi, my wife, and myself to have the boys go through Barbary and the Spanish Two-Way Immersion Program. I think the connection to local colleges, Framingham State, Mass Bay, as a way for high school kids to look into sampling perhaps a higher education while they're still in high school. And also the diversity of programs we have at the elementary schools. But I think the bottom line I see is a staff that really cares about the kids, and I want that staff to understand that I, as a school committee member, value the teachers and staff in the school. I've been there. I understand that being a teacher is a really important job and that you do make a difference. Kids will, you will make a difference, and you do every day, and that just with a smile, a positive attitude, and maybe a little humor now and then, can make even the darkest of days seem a little easier to deal with. That's the kind of spirit I hope to have had present in who I am and what I'd like to represent on the school committee.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming on the show. Good luck on April 4.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. And we'll be right back after this break with Scott Wadland.
I dare you. I dare you to change the world.
Yeah, you. Getting that college education.
I dare you to be somebody important.
Like be a teacher.
Or a reality TV star.
I dare you to stand up here.
To call the shots.
To be a role model.
An inspiration.
An innovator.
To be a teacher.
Think you can change my life?
Make me excited about science like you?
Have a career that really means something?
Then do it.
I dare you.
Next, we have Scott Wadland, current president of the Townwide PTO and member of Framingham EDIC, Economic Development and Industrial Corporation. Thank you so much, Scott, for being on the show.
Thank you, Jack.
So let's just jump right in with the first question.
Great.
You are running to be on the Framingham School Committee. Why should the residents of Framingham vote for you on April 4?
Great question. But first, actually, let me thank you for organizing this event. Aside from the Townwide PTO Forum, this is really the only chance that the voters get to hear from the candidates directly and in a structured way. So to your question about why the voter should vote for me, as Townwide PTO president, I've had the pleasure of speaking to a lot of parents, a lot of teachers who work and live in this district, a lot of taxpayers. People pretty much have the consensus that we need to improve things like communication, accountability, transparency, et cetera, in the district. Now, logic would dictate that if you keep doing the same thing over again, you're going to get the same results. So if you keep electing the same people to the school committee, you're going to get the same result that we've seen over the last few years. Now, I don't expect people to vote for me just because I'm not an incumbent. I think I have a pretty solid track record of working to improve things in our district, and so I think I'm an ideal candidate for the school committee.
Excellent. Can you tell people watching what your own personal connection is to the Framingham Public Schools?
Sure. So I have two daughters in the district. They're freshmen at the high school now. They went to McCarthy and Fuller, and, you know, they had a great experience there. I'm on the, as you mentioned, I'm president of the Townwide PTO. Previously, I served on the Fuller School Council, trying to help kind of, you know, improve the situation there. And as a parent, I've also been invited to participate in, you know, some work groups within the district to kind of bring the parent voice to the table.
Excellent.
And then on the town side, you mentioned that I'm the vice chair of the EDIC. Previously, I served on the Technology Advisory Committee. So I've tried to, you know, make my contributions on both the town and school side.
Excellent. And actually, can you tell us a little bit more about the Townwide PTO? Those of us with schools and, you know, kids in the school system, we know about our own school PTOs, but there's this Townwide PTO that's out there.
Yeah.
That everyone might not be aware of what they do.
Sure. So the, so as you mentioned, each school has its own PTO. Each of those PTOs kind of designate somebody to represent their school at Townwide PTO. And really, this year, I've tried to kind of reconstitute what the vision of Townwide PTO is, and it's to be a resource for those schools. Sometimes you have multiple schools that are all facing the same challenges, and we provide a forum to help solve those issues. We also do things like the Townwide PTO Candidates Forum. In the fall, I actually conceived the forum that we did around the charter school ballot question. You know, so really, we try to be a, you know, a place for sharing information and, you know, provide a service back to parents, PTOs, and the town at large.
Excellent.
So.
So I want to hear a little bit more about what issues you think are facing Framingham Public Schools and why you're running to address those issues.
Okay. You know, so when people ask me what the most pressing issue is, you know, what jumps to mind first and foremost is equity. You know, as I mentioned, my kids went to two of the four Level 3 schools in our district. You know, they had a fantastic education, and I know that the teachers there work incredibly hard, you know, but their result is not necessarily indicative of everyone in those schools. But from a broader sense, you know, things like equity, communication, transparency, those are all really goals. I think if you don't have strong accountability between the superintendent and the school committee, you're not going to achieve any of those objectives. You know, case in point, the whole situation with Stacy Scott. I think the school committee really failed in holding him accountable. And so that's something that, as a school committee member, I would look forward to working with Dr. Trembley going forward to really set out a plan and then hold him accountable to implementing that plan.
Is the situation around Framingham's former superintendent one of the catalysts that got you into this race, or can you talk a little bit more about?
It's not necessarily one of the catalysts. I mean, because I've been involved, you know, in the schools for a number of years, and I actually ran for a school committee, you know, two years ago. You know, but it definitely is something that a lot of people have a lot of passion about. People have even come out and said that they won't vote for any of the incumbents unless the incumbents come clean as to how they voted regarding both Dr. Scott's termination and the presumed motion to terminate that I would hope came up in executive session. You know, but again, without that information, the voters can't really make a decision.
Okay. Excellent. I'm curious if you could also talk a little bit more about, so you ran for this seat, you said, two years ago.
Yes, yeah.
What has happened in the last two years that have changed things for, you're running now for reelection.
Yeah.
So you're hoping that more people will vote for you this time around than last time.
Yeah.
What can you say to the people who didn't maybe vote for you two years ago, but now are looking at a different, you know, group of names?
Yeah.
And figuring out who maybe to vote for this time around.
Yeah. Well, two years ago, my involvement, you know, in the schools was, you know, less than it is now. I hadn't yet been involved in Townwide PTO, which has been, you know, a tremendous opportunity. You know, and I also really had no idea what I was doing running for office. You know, as someone who was recently elected, I'm sure you know all the challenges.
Steep learning curve.
And it is a very steep learning curve, you know, and I didn't get as far up that learning curve as I needed to. You know, I came in a close third to Bev Hugo and Jim Kelly. You know, in terms of what has changed, you know, on the district side, you know, a lot of the issues that I'm talking about now, I talked about two years ago, and we've started to make some improvements, but we're still not where we need to be. You know, I think we were fortunate in the past year in having a fantastic interim superintendent. You know, I have the greatest respect for Dr. Gockart, you know, and I'm hoping that we're able to keep him around for a long time. You know, but we're really not where we need to be yet, so I'm continuing to push on these same themes as two years ago.
Wonderful. Well, unfortunately, that's all the time we have for today. Thank you so much for coming on the show, and best of luck on April 4.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will be right back after this break with Jim Stockless.
Good morning. Hope you all had a good weekend and are ready to be inspired. One quick thing, I want to remind you guys to be studying.
Major key alert. Did you just look at your phone while you was in class? You played yourself.
Today, we're talking about inspirational quotes.
You want to get that paper? You better turn in that paper and get an A+. That's a major key. Another one.
Mogul talk. You want to reach the mountaintop? You got to go hard. To succeed, you have to believe.
Stay focused. Fly higher than the eagle. Don't ever play yourself. The key is to make it, so make it.
Louise. Louise, can you give me an example of an inspirational quote from recent history?
Don't play yourself. The key is to make it.
And who said that?
I did. Now that's a major key alert.
Learn the real major keys to getting to college at GetSchool.com.
And our last guest today, running for school committee, is current school committee member with former leadership in several school PTOs, Jim Stockless. Thank you so much, Jim, for being on the show.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
So let's jump right in. You are currently a member of the Framingham School Committee.
Yes, I'm in my first term.
Perfect. You're running for reelection.
I am.
Why should the voters of Framingham vote for you again?
It's a good question. I think that the school committee benefits and can continue to benefit from my experiences in the volunteer work I've done in the schools, and I also have the time available to commit to the school committee and be the kind of advocate that the town needs.
Excellent. And you have deep connections to the Framingham Public Schools. I think this morning you were telling me about being PTO president of maybe three of them over the course of 20 years or so?
Yeah, I think I'm, I take billing as the only guy that was PTO president in three different schools.
So elementary school?
No, actually, two elementary schools and one middle school. They closed the elementary school that I was the PTO president of when I was there.
Which schools were those?
It was Juniper Hill.
Okay.
Potter Road and Cameron.
Okay.
But I also served on the school council at Fuller and for a brief time at the high school, but then couldn't because I was on school committee.
Okay.
So in addition to that, I did sit on town meeting for, I believe, four years and served as the vice chair of the Committee on, the Standing Committee on Education. From that, went to the school committee, had to give up my town meeting seat. The, so I've had a long history of involvement. I've also, I was on Dr. Thayer's commission that determined what we needed for school space several years ago. I was on the Vision 2020 Committee that Dr. Scott formed when he first came to town to try to develop a plan for going into the future.
So let's talk a little bit about what you feel are the issues most facing Framingham Public Schools in this moment.
We're facing a lot of issues, as is every school system. I think, you know, some of the important ones, the, we need to ensure that all of our schools are equitable. Right now, there are different level schools in different parts of town, and there's, we need to find a way to commit the resources to each and every school equitably so that when you walk into a school in Framingham, it will be no different from one school to another. That means we need to support the staff in the schools where the populations need more support. Another issue is, and this is a two-sided sword, is the increasing enrollment. That means we're doing well. There are districts in Massachusetts that are facing decreasing enrollment, and that's a far worse problem than increasing. But we still have to find places to put the students. So that's another issue. And the work with replacing the Fuller Middle School is going to help that, but we need to work around the edges of the elementary and high school as well. But I think the main thing facing the Framingham Schools and schools in general is the problem with the foundation budget, that special education and the cost of health insurance is squeezing other things out of the budget. It's going up in an unsustainable way for local municipalities like Framingham to deal with.
What is it about Framingham that makes it the kind of town you're happy to live in and advocate for and serve on the school committee?
This goes back to why I moved here when my oldest daughter was about two weeks old, which is a crazy time to move, by the way. We were looking, she's in grad school now. We were looking for a place that was diverse, that looked like the world, but valued education. And it's not an easy combination to find, and Framingham had it then, Framingham has it now, but we're not going to be able to continue to have it unless people are advocates and dogged advocates for maintaining that commitment we have to each other to make sure that education is the main priority. So because, like I said, that's what we do here in Massachusetts, and it needs to be what we do here in Framingham.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for
You're welcome.
Coming on the show. Best of luck on April 4th.
Thank you.
That's all the time we have for our conversation, but also our conversations with the candidates for school committee here in Framingham. Thank you to everyone for tuning in to Framingham Now, and thank you to all of our guests for choosing to run for Framingham School Committee. It takes time. It takes resources, and we're all grateful for it. Remember that as you're watching at home today, if you like more than one of these candidates, there's really no need to worry. On April 4th, you have an opportunity to help decide the future of our public schools in town by voting for up to three of the five candidates for Framingham Public Schools. Thank you so much for watching. Until next time, thank you.